This is all our stuff. That's yours. I got mine.
We got an agenda.
I'm sorry, because I don't have my laptop with me.
Or key.
As at work today, no keys, no beds, just.
Out here.
There.
Risking it all. All right.
This is.
Thank you. You got one?
Yeah, stimol. Go.
Oh, I need everyone's name for like last names again, because if I'm doing real call, okay, thank you.
Troy, you ready?
All right. Good evening, everyone. The time is 6:36 PM and we are calling the City of Inkster Planning Commission's Special Meeting to Order. Roll call. Commissioner Hayes Bradford.
Chair.
Commissioner Ashley Williams.
Chair.
Commissioner Stephen Chisholm is president. Commissioner Mayor Nolan. Commissioner Stan Hall. Commissioner Tanya Williams. And Commissioner Norman McDaniel, Commissioner Matt Willis, and Commissioner Darryl Davis did communicate with me that they would not be able to make it this evening. They had, all three have excused absences. And we do have a count. We're down to item number two, adoption of agenda. Everybody has a hard copy in front of them, as everybody had an opportunity to review it. Are there any additions or subtractions? Hearing none. The floor is open for motion to adopt the agenda as is.
Some.
It's been moved in their second and seconded, moved by Williams and seconded by Hayes Bradford. All the favor? All the polls? Motion passes. Doesn't look like at this time we have any minutes to adopt. And we're moving right along to item number four. First hearing of the public for items not scheduled for a public hearing but on the agenda. The only item we have on the agenda is unfinished business, text amendments to the city zoning ordinance being Chapter 155, Article 29. Conduct a public review and consider amending the city ordinance to include additional definitions and additional uses and standards. Again, this is the first hearing of the public for items not scheduled for a public hearing but on the agenda. If there is anyone from the public who wishes to speak at this time, please approach the podium, state your first and last name for the record, and address this body.
Just confirming how Sandra Watney, he's the resident. Okay. This is regarding the liquor store.
This is just the text amendments.
This is the thing to change the zoning so that it is allowed in that sectors, which it is not allowed now.
Yes, it's multiple items. You want to go over those items real quick? It is, so additional uses and definitions. So it's liquor, beer, and wine sales, substance abuse rehabilitation clinics, adult daycare center.
Want me to read those definitions as they're standing right now, or?
Well, those are the three items if we need explanation.
Oh, those are the things you're changing to include in that? I'm just trying to get a, understand those.
For that, for that particular area, not just.
So you're including those things that she just mentioned?
Yes, for the local business district B1, not just for that area, that would be B1 all over the city.
Okay, well, number one, I am not in favor of changing the zoning to accommodate a business. I can't see where that's beneficial, and it even sounds like spots to me, which is never a good idea. Plus, to do it for a liquor store, I believe Ms. Williams mentioned how many liquor stores we already have in Inkster, which has been coupled them with all the marijuana facilities we have in Inkster. All that's left is for us to get a couple of bordelos. But we got like, but you know, and maybe a couple of other things, but I think this is a bad idea, simply because it doesn't benefit anybody but the applicant. It doesn't benefit the city of Inkster, and as the public, I am against us doing that. And that, my counsel, thank you.
Thank you. If there is anyone else at this time from the general public who wishes to speak to these matters, again, this is text amendments, review of amendments to the zoning ordinance regarding permitted uses in the local business district B1. Please approach the podium at this time and state your name for the record. Hearing none and seeing no movement, we are moving down to item number five, public hearings. And we have none at this time. Moving right along to item number six, 6A, unfinished business, case number 24-01, TA, text amendments. Amendments to the city zoning ordinance being Chapter 155, Article 29. Conduct a public review and consider amending the city ordinance to include additional definitions and additional uses and standards. Mr. Dowdell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just to give an overview, we had a applicant that was interested in doing a business that's in a B1. As our current ordinance states, that is only allowed in B3. And so that being the case, they wanted to do a text amendment. And so when we reviewed it, we said, well, if we're gonna do a text amendment, we should look at the whole view of the city and how we want to move forward. And so that's why, if you look in the report, we used Office 1, B1, B2 as the choices to use. And we all said, based on what we considered from the research in those cities of that nature, we said those are special land use. At this time, we're not changing the zoning, we're just changing what options are in the zone. These options are, well, B1, B2, or B3 are all different levels of business operating in the city. And as we reflect on the city of Inkster, based on this unique size and things of that nature, we might want to consider how businesses operate in a city of, what's six square miles if I'm not correct? So that being the case, that's why we said, well, maybe a special land use might be required for this, for the particular choices as far as the beer, beer, liquor, beer, and wine sales, substance abuse rehabilitation clinics, or adult daycare. Because we have in the way that when the city was, you know, a lot of cities, smaller cities before, you may have had a store that was almost in the middle of all residential, because that was the local store. An example, John Daly, if I'm not mistaken, there used to be a senior citizens center that when he closed down and we, at some point, our zoning was changed, that was no longer allowed, but we have a complex that now can be utilized. So that's why we, we said, okay, based on certain criteria, maybe it might be reusable again. So that's why we put these in the report as potentially a special land use. The purpose of special land use is, under certain conditions, under certain requirements that we don't feel that is going to be disruptive to an area, it may be allowed. And so that's why we, when we wrote the report up, we decided that under, as a special land use, this might be something that's in the best interest of the city.
Just a quick question as far as that entity that you're speaking of, the adult, or, excuse me, I guess it was a nursing home at the time, that's John Daly in Princeton. Was that whole area B1? Because I know there used to be a store across the street, then you got the churches and everything.
Across the street is light industrial.
The plant, then you got.
Oh, that side, yeah.
And then this side, we had the part liquor store at the corner, it's out, we own.
Oh, that. I was thinking about the one where it's vacant, it was torn down.
So I mean, it's like two or three different zonings.
Right.
I want corn. Okay.
And just, just from the standpoint, like I said, because we're such a small city, we're trying to figure out what's, what's the, the, the best use for land, but like I said, we have a sway, a light industrial that's surrounded by residential, and then we have the commercial, which is generally Michigan Avenue in the downtown area. So, like I said, it's something to consider, and that's, that's why we went forth with that.
Commissioner Williams, enter your microphone off for me, please.
So for the three reviews for the liquor sales, I understand that we had an applicant that brought that to, to commission, or to the planning department for review. Where deception, abuse, rehabilitation clinics, and the adult daycare center, was that brought up? Was that included in this particular review because we have, like, okay, so I'm assuming either the substance abuse or the adult daycare center, and concentrate on that John Daly area, I'm assuming that was one of the reasons why that came up, was, were all three, so we know two of the three. Was all three right now, is there is a contingency or issue because the buildings that we're possibly looking at making that in these B1 districts, B1 district wherever it is throughout the city, are these are viable potential businesses that are looking at into these B1 districts currently, and this is the reason why we're trying to amend?
Well, the reason that they were, they were brought up is that we've had talks where people have come in and said, hey, we're interested in buying this, and luckily, they came and talked to us before they bought the building. Because sometimes that's not always the case, and then they say, oh, but I thought it was because of this, and then you have to explain to them that, you know, that that use is no longer allowed, it was grandfathered, it was a non-conforming use that as long as it remained in, or in operation, they could have did it, but it may not have been that, that an example or mechanic shop for several years, you know? So it lost the non-conformity use of it, and so it can never be that again unless there was a text amendment or something of that nature.
Okay, so for all three of these particular entities, there has been some, some type of inquiries, there's been suggestions or things of that nature, and so when we had an opportunity, I said, let's take advantage of this opportunity. Okay. That's, that's it.
Thank you. Commissioners, is there anyone else up here that has a question or inquiry at this time?
AC, I wasn't here at the last meeting, I know you asked questions.
Well, the questions that I had were based on the narrative that was provided to us by the business that's trying to open right there on Henry Russ. And the primary case that they're making is that alcohol sales would be a leading cause for consumers to come to that store, and if they didn't have that as an ability or as a commodity to sell, then they potentially lose business. And so I was asking questions, but then I was told it was just a text amendment situation, so I was getting ahead of myself. I don't know if it's the proper time to do it now, but I can. So.
Yes, you gotta look at, I'm just looking at the text amendment.
Yeah.
I haven't really looked too hard at that particular business, as I grew up in that neighborhood, I used to go there when I was a kid.
Right.
Of course, alcohol, at least beer and wine, I think that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, beer and wine, so.
That's going to increase sales for sure, but more importantly, the text amendment just gives us more flexibility. So in our city, B1 and B2, there's not very much, there's not a big distinction, because we're such a small community. The B1 and B2 are around the corner from somebody's house, or across the street from somebody's house, so we might as well treat them the same and still give ourselves the discretion to say no. So if it's a special land use, it still has to come to us, it still has to go to council. If we don't think that fits that land use, that particular place, we can say no.
I, I disagree with it in general. I understand that we have the opportunity to say no later, but I disagree with the idea that the only thing that people want to come to stores for in Inkster is beer and wine, liquor.
That's not my position. I'm just saying, I forget about them. I'm talking about us having flexibility to say, yes, we think that's a good place for that business or that use, or no, we don't.
I, well, considering the district itself, like per your description, it is within residence and other, you know, houses across the street. I don't, I don't, I, I just, I don't think that we should allow this in the district. I understand that we can say no later, but.
Later? No, no, if, I mean.
If they do a special land use, yes.
This text amendment is for us to open up, we're too restrictive. We're, you know, we're getting ready to do the master plan, and in December, we're gonna redo the whole city, but they're here now. So I'm not saying vote yes so they can sell beer and wine. I'm saying vote yes so we can have the flexibility to do what we want to do. It's coming right back to you. So if this body decides, we can at least recommend city council not vote for a special land use for this, for beer and wine, because it's in a small little neighborhood. It's the only business in the whole, in the neighborhood on Henry Rough, which is a smaller street. You know, that's the, I don't even think that's really for us to even discuss today. You could be against that 100%, but still, it would be better for us as a city to have the authority to do what we want to do.
And, and what other districts are we allowing liquor, beer, and wine sales?
Two and three?
Two and three. And right now, two and.
Not O and one.
Oh, one is, one is the least density, it's, it's the, it's the neighborhood, the business commercial district in a neighborhood essentially. So that's the only one, no beer and wine?
Yes, as it stands right now, that, that's not allowed in B1. B1 or B2?
Or probably it is on the table, it's right here, it just says B3, that's it, just read through.
Let's be, as you say, highlighted ones are the ones that are for suggestions.
Let me give you an example, that, you know, that's your neighborhood, you're familiar with that neighborhood. So we got, Henry Rough, they have that little store they renovated. You flip it and go to Middle Belt, which is same neighborhood, we got a liquor store right on the corner.
Exactly.
So the whole point though, what's the difference? Because that's Middle Belt, and that's considered B3, versus Henry Rough, which is a smaller street, that's considered B1. It's the same neighborhood. So what, so who are we protecting? I mean, what are we doing? I'm not sure what we're doing. I mean, it's literally in the same neighborhood. I'm not, again, I'm not arguing we should give them. I'm just saying that we should be able to look at it at a case-by-case basis and say, you might say, where we got a liquor store, what we need to know for?
Five, actually, within like a 15-minute walk of this location, we're very alcohol dense.
Oh, we are.
But we should be able, because our city's so small, you're talking about from B1 to B3 in the same, we're talking one, two, four blocks. We go from B1 to B3 in the same subdivision.
So question, I know we brought up the master plan, and a part of that is updating our ordinance. I know the master plan is not scheduled to be completed until February, and for a lot of people, that's a long time away. And so when we're visiting that plan and looking at the vision for our city and deciding what's what, and updating our ordinance, can't we see a more, like, wait for a more thorough picture then and, and make a more informed decision as we get closer to that process?
Well, I mean, I think, okay, I guess we could, but we're holding up businesses, like on, the one I'm focused on is John Daly. You got light industrial across the street, it's a B1, and then it's residential across the other street. I mean, we got somebody who's ready to rehab that building, it's been vacant for God knows how long.
Rehab it into a senior center or into a rehab?
Rehab center. So to me, the difference between a nursing home and adult, they're providing the same service, they provide.
Talking about John Daly, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Nursing services, they administer drugs, pass out drugs, people stay, it's an inpatient situation. I almost don't see the difference, other than some people may have had addiction issues versus some people may just be convalescent, just need help. So why would we put that on hold for eight months? There's a deal on the table. You know, we should be able to say yes or no. I'm not even saying the city's gonna say yes, but if we make it a special land use, we get to say yes or no. Because that building's been sitting there for a long time.
Right, yes.
And if they renovate it, it's gonna be worth more, we get to tax it, we, we bring revenue in for the sick.
You also have city residents who may be concerned about the fact that there's a rehabilitation center right across the street from where they live.
But that, it can't be more concerned having a vacant building across from where they live. I mean, it's been there for a decade or more.
Now, what sort of rehabilitation are we talking?
Adult rehab, drug, I think substance abuse, substance.
I think, I guess when I'm having these conversations with you, I'm putting myself in the position of the residents, including, like you said, Frank's, that, oh, that is my neighborhood. So if I'm someone living in that neighborhood and I see another liquor store coming up, I will be concerned about that. Contrarily, if I was on John Daly and I saw that even if the building was vacant for the past however many years, now that it's being opened up, it's being opened up as a rehab, you know, center. And this is not me saying anything bad against people who have addiction issues, this is not me painting, you know what I mean? But at the same time, it could be a legitimate concern for me, especially if you have children in the neighborhood. And, and then the last thing I will say about that is that the, the vision for our city, it's, we're more than just liquor store rehab centers and you know what I mean? Like, we're more than that. So.
But, but, hold on, I mean, I hear you, but, but that's, that's, I think all of that is valid, meaning you have a right, or any resident has a right and voiced it, but that's why you have public hearings. So we don't, we don't have to sit here and decide from a text amendment standpoint, we don't want these type of businesses in our city. That's for public hearings under special land use. They're supposed to go to city council and say, I want this or I don't want this, and this is why. They may say no to the rehab center, they may say no to the beer or not, but that's their opportunity to do it. We're not even, as a city, we don't have the flexibility even considering it based on the way that this language is written now.
Right.
I mean, it's way too restrictive, even though you might be against the actual business, they're supposed to come to their elected officials and have a public hearing and say, well, we want it or we don't want it. And then elected officials say yea or nay, and they should be held accountable. If the community didn't want it, then you hold the elected official accountable. But what we're trying to do, you're trying to say throw away the text amendment, so.
I'm not saying throw away the text amendment. If we're only currently allowing it within one district, I think there's opportunity to allow it in other districts. I just think that perhaps there's a, when we're updating the ordinance, we can actually intentionally figure out where that is, and perhaps it's not B1. Maybe it is somewhere else if we feel like we want to allow that, you know what I mean?
We don't have to stop here, we're gonna do that anyway. When we pull out the master plan, we're gonna do the whole city. So we may say they can only be in B2 and B3. Now, we're gonna have to ask some conversation, what's the distinction between B2 and B1? I mean, that'll be the conversation we have.
And right now, B2 is, I wish we did have a map here. So.
Go ahead and pull it up.
So I know my, I didn't realize my iPad was about to die, but.
I can step forward, my question is, two, can it be B1, B2, or B3 yesterday, and be watched on?
My take.
So, so I guess we're focusing on individual.
Turn my phone off, please.
We're focusing on individual entities right now, but I think the text amendment is really just focusing on the.
Or, yeah, the ordinance and where we're allowing this, right?
Right.
And so that, and then I, and I fully understand what Mayor Nolan is saying, that we're trying to open up the flexibility to even allow the option to happen. And I'm saying, is, is B1 right now the, where we allow it, you know what I mean?
Well, when you have the public hearing, that's when you decide. I mean, right now, if we vote this down, you don't, we don't get to consider it. You, you decide that when they ask for a special land use, you sit here and you listen to what they have to say, you listen to the residents, and then you say, I don't think that's a good idea, or I think it's a good idea.
We're not gonna bring up text amendments ever in the future?
I'm sure, I, I'm gonna say I'm sure we'll. If we do a good, good job on the master plan, we'll have less text amendments. If we really sit down and really think this out, where we want to go with the city, we shouldn't have a lot of them, especially if you keep creating special land uses. Does, you don't have to worry about the text amendment, because council and the planning commission is besides.
And you're gonna be here.
I, I, I know, I understand, I, we're, we're talking a lot of hypotheticals and future ifs and ands, and that's, that's where I have the, the opportunity to have my voice heard in this moment now, based on what we are going to potentially allow. And that's where I'm making my decision is right now. I understand that later, we could be like, no, we don't want it. But if we say yes now, then we are opening up that avenue for it to happen later.
Consider it. You're not saying, it'd be different if we sent text amendment with no special land. That means if they want to do it, they can do it. And I think that was brought up in the last administration, they wanted to do something where you didn't have to come to the planning commission, council no more. If you just allow it in that, like, a lot of things are allowed in the district, you might want to, if you live across the street from a nursing home or group home, you can't regulate, you may not want to live across the street from a group home, you have no say in it now. You may not want to live, live across the street from a mental health facility. But if there's special land uses, you at least get to be heard, and then your elective body makes a decision one way or the other.
I.
I mean, because these are three different applicants here, we're not really here talking, I don't, point that people don't even know, disrespectful. But I'm not even here to, I wasn't even thinking about the Henry Rough thing, I knew it was coming up, but, you know, we'll decide whether we want beer and wine in the, in the little neighborhood store.
I think, I think we've said out loud that we're, we're hoping to get away from always having to have a special land use and an exception in these different districts. I think that, and y'all have heard me bring this up over this, of several planning commissions, that feels as if though, because we don't have an updated master plan, and because we haven't visited our ordinance, we're piecing things together along the way, and I just don't, I don't feel like we're being intentional, I don't feel like we're really and I would prefer if we actually did the work and did things like this when we had a guide, and a formal and an official guide to do so.
You know what you're gonna find, because looking back on these ordinance, they're 50 years old, and those people attempted to do that 50 years, I mean, it might be 60 years ago now. They listed the businesses can be in each zone. Well, guess what? The world changed. So now, we're dealing with six businesses that are allowed in a B2. And now we have 30 different types of businesses that weren't even dreamed of back then, and so we have to revisit it. So you're never gonna not have to revisit it, ever.
I understand that.
But we want to at least make it, give the city more flexibility so we don't have to be here doing text amendments. It's, again, you, somebody gotta make the decision at some point.
Okay, go ahead. I do have one other thing I want to say, but you can.
Here's real quick, because we were talking about pulling the map up, and this is the one that was posted or established, if you will, by Wade Trim in February 2021. There's two spots that are B1 in the city of Inkster.
Very small.
Very small. Looks like there's one at the corner of, what is that, Walnut and Carlisle?
Right, because that used to be a hotel and, and grandparents' workshop, yeah.
And then the other one is at the corner of Princeton and.
One we talked about?
Yeah.
The one we talked about.
Bailey, yeah, that's it. If nothing else in the city of Inkster is B1, and I'm just showing you this, just because I know we had talked about it, but those are the two right there.
And so, yeah. Henry Rough.
Henry Rough.
Henry Rough, yeah, Henry Rough. And where, in Oakwood or.
Oh, yeah, sure is, little bitty spot. That's the exact same spot, yeah, and that's the other one right there.
See, we may look at the master plan and say, well, we need a B1.
Right.
I mean, you know, eliminated completely, that's all it is, I mean.
Right, if they're that small.
All these businesses are near our neighborhoods. I mean, there's no running away from that, the way the city was designed.
But I also think of it like this, I understand that because we're small, we may seem restrictive, but I also feel as if though we can be more responsive and more nuanced because we're small. We can, you know, we listen to our residents and what they want and can make these decisions based on that feedback. And even our last master plan, one of the things that was listed was people wanted less liquor stores, they didn't want more.
You made the same argument I made to you a few minutes ago. You want us to be able to say no. Well, if it's a special land use, we can say no.
Right.
Based on what the residents say. We don't have to put it in the text where you cannot sell bubble gum in the B1, you know? You have to come before council and the planning commission. Somebody's gotta make the decision. And if we don't want it in our community, we just say no. And we, there's factors we have to list, but, you know. Mr. Chair.
I also, on a relative, like, because last, last we spoke, when we talked about text amendments, and I was looking over these things, I had asked, do we even make a distinction between onsite alcohol use and take home? And you said, we call that a bar, but I actually don't even see bar listed as one of the texts. So do we have to explicitly state that out loud, or is that something that's inherently there because of the state? You know what I mean?
Bar lounge is.
It's in there? Where, okay, because I did, it's in alphabetical order, right? So when I look at basement, and then it goes to bed and breakfast. So I don't see bar.
Well, it probably says brew chub, is that the same thing?
B3?
B3.
Is John B3?
Okay.
Lasted. Oh, I see it, number seven?
They're not allowed to be, oh, over here.
It's over here, but should it be listed here too as a part of the text? Because we're talking about actual definitions, and we're listing, one of the things we're considering is liquor, beer, and wine sales, substance abuse rehab, and adult daycare. So shouldn't we have like an actual text that says bar or onsite alcohol versus?
He club?
Take home?
You have some things that, that have a definition, and there's some things that don't have a definition.
I see what you're saying, yes, I'm looking at the definition.
Yeah, that's what I'm actually looking at. So that was part of the reason why I asked. So that was part of the reason why I asked that we review this too, because we're considering three, but we might be missing others.
Well, is the brew, is the brew pub considered the bar?
Brew pub doesn't say that, if you actually read the definition, it doesn't describe a bar.
It doesn't describe a bar.
Brew pub doesn't describe a bar, it says, a facility licensed by the Michigan Liquor Control Commission in conjunction with a Class C tavern, now less bars are Class C taverns, says a Class A hotel or Class B hotel that annually manufactures and sells not more than 2,000 barrels of beer only for consumption.
So right now, if we're talking about liquor, beer, and wine sales, retail establishments focusing on the sale of packaged alcohol beverages, including beer, wine, and spirits, but we don't even say if that's an onsite thing versus people taking it home, you know what I mean?
Package liquor is, is taken at home.
Not necessarily. What if you?
You have to put, you have to put wine, liquor in a bag, we leave a, we leave a store.
Wait.
Package liquor.
Right, it's packaged liquor, but are we saying that we're inherently, um, expecting people to assume that packaged liquor means you take it home and you drink it offsite? Or do we need to explicitly state that?
That's the state law, isn't it?
State law.
You say law, you got.
Can't drink in public.
Not, but, but what I'm saying, there are onsite, so you have onsite where people can buy their beer and their, their wine and drink it onsite.
That'd be a bar.
Right, but we don't even have bar as a definition, that's my point.
We're tapped, but we can add it.
So that's my point, yeah.
Saying, that's why we, we, I tried to emphasize that as we move forward, you can create, as, as, as we finish the master plan, as we do the ordinance, we can actually put definitions to it, but, but for, for the sake of this one, I couldn't say.
We can add the definition right now. I mean, I was always gonna say, if we're missing something, you're like, look, I can see we're missing it.
But the definition, it says restaurant, and under that, number one, bar lounge, an establishment.
Which package you're doing?
I'm in the definition.
All right, the definitions.
Yeah.
So go to restaurant?
Yes, um, it's page, uh, let me see.
Oh, it's alphabetical order, so it should be in ours.
I see bar lounge. Yeah, it's, it, it's under restaurant, bar lounge.
So, but then, so it's like.
I see what you're saying.
Right, restaurant, this, yeah, restaurant.
Yeah, but, but under that, it gives you the definition, so bar lounge, an establishment operated primarily for the dispensing of alcoholic beverages.
It looks like they combined it.
Yep, yeah.
Rarely have any entities that sell.
Yes, although the sale of pre-prayer food or snacks may also be permitted.
Yeah.
Bar lounge is part of a larger banking facility, it shall be defined as that part of the structure so designated or operated. So I'm assuming that that's where.
Same close.
And to go, sit enough.
So it says, an established operating primarily for the dispensing of alcoholic beverages.
Just saying, you can go to Applebee's and take your alcohol home, y'all, and that's a restaurant. We can't assume that just because it says restaurant, people are drinking it on site.
Home is legal in the whole state.
Yeah, yeah.
Restaurant or bar wants to allow you to take it home.
Yeah.
Some of them don't do it because liability, drive shop liability, but they can't.
Just for clarity, are you suggesting at this time, an additional definition be added?
Maybe not, I'd not at this time, because I, I don't have a definition worked up right now, unless you guys wanted to think it through, but I don't, I didn't come prepared to say, oh, let's define bar as this.
No, I got you, I just wanted to not overlook what it was that you were interjecting.
But, but went to my, like, last meeting, when we were talking about text amendments, I, you know, I'm going, sound like a, a broken drum or beating a dead horse. You know, we're considering three, when, why not actually do a thorough review and figure out what we need?
We're gonna do that, actually, Ms. Wheeler.
Yeah.
You can, when you make the recommendation.
Okay.
Say that, you know, um, additional definitions as prescribed.
Okay, so like, what, right now, say we need to consider or make a motion to add additional definitions?
No, you don't have, I think you could, you could make a motion to approve or recommend this by council with additional definitions.
Okay.
And it's just a matter of who's gonna write the definitions, and then put that before council.
Gotcha. Okay, well, you know, I'll be all over that, I don't mind.
We know you would.
Um, and, okay, so you guys are gonna have to help me, uh, figure out how to say it. But, all right.
Just, just real quick, commissioners, being that, because we're not in a public hearing, and we did go a little bit more extensive, I know at the last meeting, we asked for, or I'm sorry, now we, a commissioner or two asked for definitions in the zoning and this information, but it wasn't readily available to the public at that particular time, even though it was on the website. Um, because we do have two members from the public, I would like an opportunity to give them to speak. If you have any questions or concerns before we call for the vote, that way we can hear you fully. Do you guys have anything that you wish to say?
The truth is never told.
Go right ahead, Mr. Wylie.
Oh, yeah, Samantha Wylie, and I'm listening to all of this going on, and I understand the flex, the need for the flexibility to make a decision. But what you have to understand is I just lived through four years where people made no decisions, they did what they were told. And that was the governing body. And that's one of the things you have to take into consideration. If certain things are not stipulated for certain people, they do what they're told. And we suffer as a result of it. The last council is the reason we have all this marijuana in this city, because they did what they were told, even though they're, so you have to have something specific for these people, or else they're gonna do what they wanted to. And that's all I'm saying, I'm a rule person, I need a rule to go by, and then I can challenge that rule. And when you say, oh, we can do it at some other time, you have to take into consideration the people that are making these decisions for you. And everybody who sits on these panels, on these commissions, on these councils, do not have Inkster's best interests at heart. And the reason why I say I'm so vocal about this, because I lived through four years watching this city deteriorate. And I'm not interested in having it happen again. So that's my concern, when you say, but we can decide at a later time, who's making these decisions? And what's the reason they're making many decisions?
This body has the ability to create the language, you know, and we know, first of all, this body is definitely concerned, I'm just here for my conversation. They, we all get it, we understand, it's a balancing act. But I think if we send it to city council, even if they are sleepwalking, even though you're talking about me and Steve, even if, as long as we specify what we're trying to do, even if they just go with it, they're gonna go with something that's detailed and that we can use.
They're not, I just told you, I just lived through four years of specifying the, the, the degree.
Oh, do you, have you met her? We about to, we about to do that.
Wanted to, they did what they were told. And as a result, this entire community is suffering. All I'm saying is put a law into effect that people have to follow, and they can't dissemble things and, and, and make it so. You keep talking about this, I don't think it's something that we should just decide now. I think it's something that you need to go in depth, I'm with Ms. Wheeler.
Uh-oh.
This is, let's, let's investigate, let's find out how it benefits. Because you gotta say, for the last several administrations, things haven't been done for the benefit of people. With the exception of your last administration, things that were not done for the benefit of the city of Inkster. And that's something that I say all the time, and it's something we got to start doing, because we're gonna leave a hellhole for our children, otherwise. And y'all may think I'm, I came out of my garden to talk, and then, so you're not on feeling.
And I tricked her, regale you, to show you the, how important this is.
That you can't leave it up to certain people. You can't leave it up to a body that's not interested in doing the right thing. Everybody is not on the same page.
So that means you're saying it should be no special land uses?
No, I'm not saying there should be no, see? Put words into my mouth. There shouldn't be special land uses, but it has to be specified to the point where people can't allow it them. This, this situation we're talking about, there are rules and regulations while you can turn down something. Do you think that last council ever used any of them?
I, I think, um, really just honestly, speaking from what you've divulged thus far, I think you all are kind of sort of saying the same things, just in different perspectives.
Right.
Um, because you're saying abide by this, abide by this, let's go by this, let's hold people to standards, to the standard. And I think you all are saying the same thing, just at different levels. But other than that.
Then saying you have to know who's in those chairs.
This is true.
Everybody that's in those chairs doesn't, is not there for the benefit of the city. And when you don't have it specified to them, they go wherever they want to go, that's all I'm saying.
Thank you, and we're, we're taking all that into, you know, consideration, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, in that way, whenever whoever gets ready to meet their cast, oh, go right ahead, Mr. Dada.
So, a- as you know, if we, we don't have a definition, and if it's not in, uh, in our list, it can't, it can't happen. So that's, that's why they came for the text amendment, because when they came, they became before us, to, to the planning department, they were like, hey, I want to open up a bar, I mean, you had a bar skewed. We would like to, a liquor, beer, and wine store, and I said, no, you can't do it.
Because it's not listed.
It's not listed, and.
Wasn't exist.
It's the way the ordinance is.
So a question, can, is, but we're not saying just list it, we're saying list it and allow it and be one, correct?
Under, under, as a special land use.
As a special land use. So there's, there would be a difference between saying, hey, let's just add these to the text as a definition and allow it where it already is, do we have it allowed somewhere, then B two, B three? B three, we have it allowed somewhere else. But we're not just saying allow the text, we're saying allow the text and allow it in a district that doesn't express, like, as a special land use.
We're saying, under such conditions, in this area, if it can be considered. And that's when it comes before you, and, and you look at it, and you say, wait a minute, you know, that's a, that of a small lot. It's, it's, around here, you, you look at, at the condition, which you can make a decision where you recommend to the city council, yes, that's something we would like to see, no, that's not something. Within, usually, which be a sample of the Henry Rough, it, it itself is, is what I would consider spot zoning, because it's one little, you know, maybe two parcels. One of those parcels is DTE.
Right.
You're saying that if we just sit that areas versus the entire BY?
I think I, I actually do have a question. So how is it that the liquor, these texts aren't here, but we are allowing it in B two or B three? B three.
What you looking at?
So, because liquor, if we're going in alphabetical order, right, is it, is it listed in the actual text?
I think you were reading it.
I don't, it's not here, so, so that's my question, how is it not here, but it's, it's allowed and be?
That, that was the thing.
So, but right now, the argument also is that it is currently, uh, allowed in B two, I'm sorry, y'all, B two? B three, it's currently, but how is that if it's not even here?
In Dallas, that's. Which one is this?
So this is the text, these are all the texts, these are all the definitions.
Okay, so that's definite.
This liquor, beer, and wine definition is actually not here, so if it's not here, how is it here?
That, that's a.
In the B two that it's supposedly currently allowed in.
B three.
Or B three, sorry, y'all, I'm gonna get it, B three. So how is it allowed in B three, but it's actually not even a definition here?
At some point, whenever the, the, they were updated, they, they, they made the, um, decision to put it in, in one text, well, quite a lesser, the ordinance, but not.
As a text, so, um, next question, could we allow it as a part of the definitions without actually allowing it in B one?
Sure, of course you can, you can put that as a definition.
Is there, so.
So it's a definition, but this is to talk about zoning, that's just.
Right, exactly, that's just a definition. So right now, but before us, it's both the text amendments and an amendment to, as a special land use, to be one.
Correct.
I mean, that's the text amendment includes both.
Right, exactly. But that's interesting, that it's actually allowed in B three, but we don't even have it as a definition.
And then that's, that's where, you know, we have to, to take into consideration how, how we want our ordinance to be. In that, yes, we have a definition, you can define it, it's, it's quantify, things of that nature. And then we say, this is where it's allowed, or this is where it's allowed by special land use.
Well, Mr. Dada just asked, what are you doing next week, you gonna drop the ordinance?
Let me know when I make, I'll make final comments, I think I got all my questions.
And, and the reason I said too, when I was talking about the general public, and we, yeah, too, really, if you will, uh, because with the DDA and things of that nature, you might be going through some things like this potentially.
Yeah.
So if you are just observing and absorbing, great, but if you had anything that you'd like to say at this particular time, because like I said, we're not at the public hearing, but wanted to provide, draw an opportunity to speak real quick, feel free approach. If not, they'll look. For Troy guesses.
Patrice, Patrice Patton, um, it seems as though things need to come together. I know we've had, we have a different governing body, but we have to move forward from what we had in the past. We can't go and say what we had in the past, we're not gonna get anywhere. We're a small community, and we need to just come together. And with, I'll agree with, talking to Sir Henry Rough, that friend of mine, with Oakwood.
It was Glenwood and, and, and it'll be what they used to own, Glenwood.
And now, he just passed away, uh, but I, I don't agree with it, we don't need to mark their store.
Right now.
If, I think something just needs to be worked out, I'm thinking the decision needs to be made today. I.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're just deciding the, the text amendment.
The text amendment. I, I mean, we can, uh, for me, I'm like, we can do definitions, but I am like adding it to the district to be one. No.
That is, that's why you're here.
That's why, yeah. I, I, like I said, I, there's a vision for our city that I know that we're trying to work through and eventually reach. I would rather us do the due diligence and the work to figure out what all of this looks like as a whole, rather than decide it now. And when it comes specifically to these, but I know we can, we're saying special land use, and we could potentially say no later, but at the end of the day, I, we're more, we're, I, people have a vision of what they think Inkster is, and what their residents are, and what we only are interested in. And the narrative is, black people or low-income people are only interested in alcohol, and we, you know, the rehab centers and substance abuse, that's, that's the narrative that everyone thinks that we fit in, and we're not, you know, I think other things were mentioned at the last meeting, like, why not consider a grocery store, a smoothie store, other, we're interested in these other things. And I don't think we will only come to a store just because it sold alcohol or it sold beer and wine, when we literally have a plethora of options within a 15-minute walk of this specific location, but not even just this specific location, we are alcohol dense. And I think our city and our residents deserve more than us just kind of consistently putting up liquor stores everywhere.
I respect that opinion, but that's, that's what you say at the special land use public hearing.
But can't I say that now?
You did. Hey, we already have a tin alcohol, uh.
Yeah.
Beer, wine, liquor store.
There's four, there's four more, there's four times more convenience and liquor stores in black and low-income neighborhoods compared to white or more affluent neighborhoods. Four times more, and then elementary school children are two times more to go to these places, and middle school and high school children are at least going to these places once. And then it's usually, you know, um, processed, highly-processed food, tobacco, and other things that are being sold there. And then there's a bunch of other data that talks about the nuisance and other things that are related to these types of things, and it's all correlated and all relates to one another. And so I am not interested in opening up that avenue in order for it to be decided at a later date. I think, um, I'd just rather make that decision now.
That's, and that's.
Yeah, but there's plenty of people here to say otherwise.
There's one of the things here too, is, we do, you know, we have to accept the fact to agree to disagree.
Yeah, exactly.
And then we just move forward.
Move forward.
Additionally to that, is what, you know, I'm gonna credit, uh, former councilwoman Sandra Wiley to, is the fact that, and I'm just gonna use this public information, with our city attorney's situation, that she felt like we were being billed too much, things of that nature. She sat down, she built a packet of all the amount of money that we had spent for cases we either settled, we lost, whatever, whatever the situation was, she presented it to each elected official. And wanted them to make a sound decision in that capacity. Whether they did it or not, that was on them. And so you still have that same right as both a commissioner and a citizen. So regardless of however this vote pans out tonight, you still have all these other avenues to approach these people who you feel might have something on mind.
Yeah.
Come and what?
Yes.
In this space, you know, the city council meeting, it's up to them to make the decisions until they choose not to come and make the decisions.
Right, right.
You think, as residents, if we think our elected officials are not making good decisions, you gotta get them out of it. I mean, that's your recourse is vote them out of it. Recall. Nobody gets recalled.
Right.
The next time.
Yeah, yeah. No, I, I agree. Um, you know, come together. I under, I, I, you guys know, I'm a reasonable person. It's not as if I don't understand where you guys are coming with, with the flexibility and the restrictiveness. And looking at the map, they're very, very small districts. So, um, I can understand the consideration. But on the same line, it's like, they're very small districts. Like, we might not even decide that they, they need to exist in the future. And I'd just rather, you know, make that decision at that time. I don't know that I, I would.
But basically.
Far as you do it now.
Just taking B one and treating it like B two.
Yeah, exactly.
So if we eliminate B one, it wouldn't change any. Whatever we decide today, we, even if, there's only three of them. There's really no point. But if we make them all B two, it's still the same rule. It's still special lands, no matter what. Or if we make them all, can't all be three, three. Nah, you know. B one and B two, I don't see very much difference in our community.
I know, but I, and I do see a difference because of how small we are.
Before, before you have seen, did you have anything else?
I, go ahead, go ahead. No, I, I was just saying, and that's why, like, so Mayor Nolan's point is, he doesn't really see a difference because of how close proximity they are. And I actually see it as a difference because of how close they are. So it's.
Help me understand.
So.
Middleboat has two.
Because we're so small. Go ahead.
So, um, to my understanding, Mayor, you have no issue with a liquor store being?
Oh, no, I'm not saying that. No, no, I'm saying, I, I don't think the distinction between B one and B two in the same neighborhood, like Middleboat has five, five lanes, two lanes going each way and a turning lane. Henry Rough has two. It's the same neighborhood. I grew up on Parkwood, in between Henry Rough and Middleboat. It's the exact same neighborhood. So you're saying you don't want a kid to walk to Henry Rough and see a liquor store, but if he walks to Middleboat, he'd be looking at the liquor store. So I, I just, I try, and I'm not saying we need more liquor store. I have plenty, you know, but, but I'm trying to understand, the same thing with the marijuana argument, what are we protecting them from? Cause I remember originally, um, people had a problem with it being across from a daycare center. And I said, well, when it first started, people had fears. We didn't understand what was going on. It was new. We were kind of trying to fill our way through. But when people said it's right across from a daycare center or a school, you know, there's rules, can't be that. I said, what is the actual fear? I was at a planning commission. You think a kid on Inkster Road is gonna cross the five lane highway, go into the marijuana dispensary, purchase a bag and go back to school? What are we actually scared of? We didn't want him to see it. I think it's the optics here. But I don't know if you ever knock doors, you go in people's homes, the weed is sitting on the coffee table. The pistol is sitting on the table and the 40 ounces in the refrigerator. So I'm saying, we're protecting our kid. Most of our kids are seeing all this stuff. Our, their parents are showing them all this.
And, and I'm not saying that that's not true, but I'm also saying we don't have.
We don't have to contribute.
Right, right. And, and I do see, because we're in close proximity, how that adds, like I said, to the density of it all. So I understand what you're saying. They're close, so it's really not a difference. And I'm like, they're close and that is making a difference.
Second, let's give him this.
But go ahead.
Like, Middleboat is like a north street highway. And then we have Henry Rough is like a residential.
It is more residential.
Same, but not the same because the residence was right there.
Yeah.
Right there, but it's just a gift.
Not to mention you have a park that's within, like, that's right there. So then now we're, like I said, I'm not saying we're opening up a liquor store. But if it was there, then people are going there, they're walking to the park and then, you know what I mean? I'm like, at least make them drive an extra, walk an extra. That part, exactly. So, um, I, that's, that, I look at it as because we're small, we have to be more selective.
I don't have a problem with that position. I just think we'll make the decision. And then I think the planning commission and the city council is the appropriate person to make this.
Yeah, exactly.
That's all. All right, well, we're gonna hold off for a minute. Ms. Patton, did you have any final words? I just wanted to make sure.
Just, just like I said, it's the four lane highway versus the, you know, residential street, but it's all, it's the same, but not the same. The practice, you know, it's, how do you explain it?
It's different. Same people.
Yeah, same people.
I live right in the middle of the block. I used to go to Middleboat to go to the little party store to get my lemon heads and my Faygo. And then sometimes I went to Henry Rough and went to the party store to get my honey bun and whatever. All bad for me. I shopped Inkster when I was a kid.
I used to walk and go to Frank's Party Store on my way to the bus stop, which was right there at Voss Park. Stop there on my way and stop there on my way back. So it's very convenient location. And then that's, I think, another reason why I'm like, there's so many opportunities, other things that we can use it for.
See, it's gonna be easier for people to walk to those, that store.
Exactly. Walk to that store. And yes, there's one right there on Middleboat. And, and you know, you might have to walk another 10 minutes to get to it, but sure, walk another 10 minutes to get to it.
Even the liquor store?
Yeah.
Well, most of those people driving or riding.
But in this case, but in this case, they wouldn't, they wouldn't actually have to drive because they can just walk straight up the street like I did and get it right there.
Why you telling on your?
But I wasn't old enough to get alcohol, so I wasn't getting alcohol. That's what I'm saying.
We've been having discussions about. So we're gonna go ahead and move forward. Thank you, Ms. Patton, if you don't have anything else to say. All right, cool. Appreciate it. And commissioners, we, again, just to remind everybody, we're on, we're under unfinished business. Case number two four does one text amendment. And these are amendments to the city zoning ordinance via chapter 155, article 29. If there was anything additional that needs to be said that hasn't been said at this time, I don't want to cut anyone off, but I do want to move us forward. Cause we did discuss this at the last meeting and we've discussed it a bit ad nauseam tonight, and we're gonna have more discussions going forward. If there's anything new or additional that needs to be said or designed, commissioners, please feel free to go ahead and do so.
Could we have an opportunity to change the narratives, y'all? That's it. That's, I rest my case right there. Until future discussions.
Alrighty. Well, in that case, the floor is open for a motion.
Oh, is this the part where I'm supposed to say, consider the text for a future, like definitions?
I make.
Do we do that? Yes. I make a motion that, I told you I was gonna need y'all help.
No.
How do I say?
Okay, so floor is open for a motion to approve or deny the text amendments with anything additional that you as commissioners need to include in this.
Oh, see, I'd, I'd rather just make that a separate thing, cause I don't want to approve it with additional changes in the future. So maybe that's not my thing right now.
Well, not additional changes. You can make additional changes tomorrow, before it goes to city council. So like the way it reads now, it says, consider amending the city ordinance to include additional definitions and additional uses and standards. So if you make the motion to approve this and say, uh, you, you, the, this body has the ability to add additional definitions that are not already theirs, before city council considers it, you can add that. But if you want it denied, if you don't want any of it going, then you, you would make a motion to deny it.
And so, sorry, not to drag out the conversation. I think that there is opportunity to add additional definitions in the future. Um, and that's a whole separate issue. This one, as it stands right now, I want to deny. So, but it doesn't sound like I can add that here. It will mean, mean to be.
Yeah, what if you make the motion, we're gonna ask for support or a second, and then we're gonna go.
So I may, uh, to deny, but then with the additional considerations in the future? Yeah, so that's my point. Like, I'm like, there is opportunity to make a future text amendment. I just, I'm denying, I'm making the motion to deny this. And so that's what I'm asking. Like, how do I get to that later part, later?
You can do it in master plan process.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine. That's why I was asking you guys, do I make that motion for future considerations today? Or do I make it later? That's what I.
You don't have to make it at all.
Okay, or not at all. But I think there's opportunity there. I just don't want to attach it to this.
Do you have a second?
So do I make a motion to deny, do I say, make a motion to deny amendments to the city zoning ordinance being chapter 155, article 29, to conduct a public review and consider amending the city ordinance to include additional definitions and additional uses and standards?
Well, you just made a motion. Second or support. Hearing none, the motion dies due to lack of support. The floor is open for a motion to approve or deny item six A. So move to approve item six A. With the. It's been properly moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Uh, hi, all the polls?
Nay.
Motion passed. I think somebody swallowed his whistle. I'm not sure who it is. Alrighty, thank you everyone.
Oh, are we adding our miscellaneous stuff today?
No.
We got more?
Well, the regular one.
We get down to miscellaneous when we get. We're down to new business. Doesn't look like we have any new business for this evening, so we're down to miscellaneous. At the last, uh, planning commission meeting, there were some miscellaneous items that we were going to briefly discuss with this body. And what was that again?
It was the social media thing, right? And then was it one other? No.
If you can remember it, great.
Right, I cannot remember it.
So let's real quick, touch on the social media thing. You wanna go ahead?
It was, so, we, um, it was.
The emails?
The emails and the, the social media policy. So I know that there's been some confusion about actually what the official Inkster page is. And, um, you know, where the official news is going.
Yes.
And we weren't clear on whether or not the ones that say official communication of Inkster were actually that. And it turns out they aren't. And there's a whole official list that we ended up getting from Troy after the fact, after that meeting. Um, but me and him were concerned because there's certain misinformation that gets out there. Even about the marijuana dispensaries and things. And we were like, what is the proper channel, um, to use in order to get that information out? So that people have the right information from the right people. Um, and whether or not we actually had a social media policy. We do, but it's an internal one. There's no public one. There's no, well, how we interact with the.
With the public.
With the public.
So just as short, real quick, guys, um, a lot of the social media pages that we see out there bear the city of Bakersfield's name. We don't have any control over those. That's unfortunate, because when you look at the surrounding communities, Dearborn, they have theirs, Detroit has theirs, so on and so forth. And they're active. Mind you, it could be paid employees, that's all they do, or it could be some in-house employees. Unfortunately, in our capacity, when there is misinformation that's put out, what we do is we're reactive and we're chasing a fire. And we're trying to put it out with a water hose and it's a five o'clock, you know, five o'clock fire. Versus having an actual fire hydrant, fire truck, so on and so forth. So we did some investigation to find out what all this is going on, things of that nature. We know multitude of people would run these other pages. And sometimes they could allow that misinformation to go out there and it spirals out of control. And so in an effort to start minimizing that, we started talks on what we can actually do um, with Ashley's expertise and that, and just my general know-how and researching and looking at different things. Cause a lot of us don't know what specifics to look at to even find out how or who is an administrator on these pages. So just going forward, we are hopeful that we can do something worse than an official city extra page. Even though you see one that's an Inkster official communication, which I was under pressure, I was until Ashley asked me the question. I did a couple clicks and said, oh crap, this is not an official page. Cause people are taking it as gospel, who controls it? That one.
Regular resident. Yeah.
I didn't need.
Right.
We're dropping in those, in those to get word out, but I didn't know. So like, and we know, for instance, Robert Turley controls two of them. One has 10,000 members and one has about 14,000, something like that. And it's great because all those people are active and looking at stuff. But, you know, I'm just using this for an example. When we drop something out there, we do have to wait on his approval to approve it in that group. Now, is it?
For Robert Turley.
That's correct. But the rest of them, they drop it out there and people see something and a lot of the people that are posting stuff are not people to come to these meetings. They're not people to watch the city council meetings. And they're people to actually physically say, in those pages, I'm not going to that meeting, because they're gonna say, thank you for your comments. Have a nice night. That's literally what they're putting out there. And they're spiraling stuff that's getting 30 to 60 to 90 different comments. And then we have a fire to chase. As the administration, as the planning commission, 2019, we did it with the marijuana stuff. When they told us we were tearing down parks, um, sorry, uh, uh, no, regards, parks outside, yeah, to build cultivation center. And it was all false. They stood out there in public at food drives to pass that information out. So what we're looking at doing is even trying to get like, yeah, we have code red, but everybody's not signing up for it. Some people like to engage. And so what we're looking at doing is being able to have a medium for us to effectively put out the correct information. So the same information you all get out here in the crowd and hear us deliberating about, those people who choose to utilize Facebook and Instagram or whatever, the social media, Twitter, so on and so forth. Will have an opportunity to say, oh, this officially came from the city of Inkster. This is not my next door neighbor dropping this in the group they created. Uh, Commissioner Case Bradford.
Is there a way that we maybe could have a conversation with Robert Turley since he seems to have the best interest in the city? And, and, and there's already a platform there. Maybe instead of reinventing a will, maybe we could try to partner with that.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say yes to that. And the only thing is, that could be, I don't want to say a subsidiary, but it could be something in addition. We still want our own official things. For instance, when you look at. I'm gonna. No, I'm not. I'm gonna use just the president of the United States. And I'm not talking about any specific president, but their handles are POTUS. And then it's the White House.
Gotcha.
Then it's their own personal. POTUS is the president of the United States.
Right.
And so they put stuff out on behalf of the president, but when, when the president changes, the handle goes with that president. And the same thing with the White House. That goes with whoever is running the White House. Their personal handle is their personal handle. Even though they're an elected official and you all know that's a gray line and all, or a gray area and all that stuff. And what you put out on that platform is a public statement from you. That's how they view it. Uh, so yes, we could have a conversation with him because he's all for it. But we still want our own, because say, for instance, he, something happens and he's not controlling or he shuts it down for a minute or something like that. We still want an outlet to be able to go out there. Or say, he just doesn't agree with something that comes through. He controls that. And he has that right to say, no, I'm not going to approve this.
So Troy, um, our media specialist was gracious enough to tell me which ones were actually official. So you have the Inkster Michigan staff, and then you have one for city hall, and then one for department of public services, and then one for the complex. Oh, and Inkster Commission on Aging.
And what I had to, Mayor, to Commissioner Williams was the fact that it, we probably need to centralize a lot. We're too small to have five different ones. And if we could direct everybody to, you know, one, that would be great. So, so someone that is the assigned person to release on behalf of the police department. Somebody that's the assigned person released on behalf of city hall, the mayor's office. Or planning commission, speak for city council or any board of commission out there, once it's been reviewed and approved, then it gets dispersed. That way it's not.
One central.
Exactly. That way it's not DDA, got their page and they got 30 followers and police and fire board, uh, commission have theirs and they got 20. And I got my own and I got 10. And Ashley has her, so on and so forth. It's just centralized. It sounds like there's opportunity creep. Absolutely.
Yeah, that's exactly what we were saying.
You have to, uh, propose policy where everything's filtered through one city official Facebook page, Instagram page, all this. Each department can have an administrator or something. Right. And then we, we figure out how we're gonna start that. Can they just put stuff down? Does it have to go through the mayor? Does it have to go through communications? This should be a step-by-step process. See, yes, but right now I have no idea what's in. I see, I see it when I go on and look.
Right.
And we just create a template. All you have to do is fill in those blanks. So there's stimer is there. So that way, even if we have to send it to the attorney, it could take them five minutes to look through, because they already know key things they're looking for. Just like with job applications, how the computer seals throughout those different applicants, we know that. So we're not like, well, you spelled directly wrong. Spelled microphone wrong. Like, we ain't gonna check all that here. You know, all you do is put in the picture, information, who, what, when, where, why, how, and boom, so.
There's an opportunity there to, to get consistent with our marketing and our image. You know, especially if everyone is using a template of sorts. And it can all have like the consistent look and feel, which is something that we're, you know, doing as a part of the RRC stuff anyway.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
I think at our next meeting, we should, if we have some language to look at, let's, let's consider it. Absolutely. We'll send it to council. And then this way too, we don't have to depend on staff or overwork them. By saying, oh, well, this is what we want you to do. Now, and they listen like, ma'am. And then this way too, we don't have to depend on staff or overwork them by saying, oh, well, this is what we want you to do now, and they listen like, man, doing a million other things already, why, you know, why can't y'all do it? So, yeah.
I think it's an opportunity for all the boards of commissions, including ourselves, to get more information out there directly, get more participation, get, but, you know.
Just start posting what happens at Army.
Absolutely. I, I breathe it, just like that, uh.
The summary.
Thing, yeah, the summary, because I'm gonna be honest, in other communities, and, and not to you, cause you already know, but in other communities, when I have attended New York Heights and Garden Cities and Westland meetings, when you review their social media pages, their websites and things like that, and they had these different, um, mayor's corners, or whoever corner it might be, they had those summaries there, so you're not like, oh, I missed a meeting, what happened? You could just get online and read the full summary at your leisure and know what's going on, and say, I wanna get involved with that.
Oh, no.
Versus us, everybody like, I didn't know that was coming, and use Dairy Queen for example. The only way I know it's gonna be a chilling grill, because there's been a conversation of ad nauseam on Facebook.
Oh, really?
See? See?
Y'all right down the street from me.
Wow.
But.
Can't believe everything also.
I just don't know. I knew that because he told me.
That's what we thought, I seen stuff about you on social media.
Yeah.
Joe Trump.
You haven't seen the picture? What, M and P Diddy? This your, this your part? Oh, I'm sorry, I got it right here. I, I got it right here.
A chilling grill, a chilling grill, so that is gonna be like where they can also sell food and stuff too. Yeah.
How about you in the letter resignation?
For Esther and Big B call.
It's gonna be.
Ooh.
That's a good, that's a question, right?
Big B is step, Big B's gonna be.
People have been asking me where it is, I don't know where it is. Yes.
Okay, oh, oh, hold on one second, wait a minute, uh, let's, we in social media right now, when we get to, uh, second hearing of the public, or miscellaneous, we'll.
I have one more miscellaneous just kinda thing, so can we get a, um, a map of the different districts? I don't, I honestly don't know where the districts starting in.
Oh, districts like one through six?
One, two, three, one through six.
You don't? So. Glad you said that. Former Councilwoman Sandra Wiley was actually talking about incorporating that in some material that would be dispersed to the community.
Okay.
Because she is, she, you, look what you did. You have confirmed what she said. Our residents don't know where their district started in.
They don't.
Cause I don't, yeah. I don't know where the other districts.
Right, you might know your own district, but yeah, yeah, I don't, I'm like, I don't know where six starts or, or ends, can you get that?
Other people don't. Absolutely, so that is in the clerk's office.
Okay.
Because it's a voting thing with us, the citizens' tract, just so you all know, does not match what our districts are within the community, and people had that confused. And we had a debate when they showed me the citizens', the citizens' tract, and the citizens' tract was running like north and south, whereas ours is just kinda sorta, I mean, north and south, like in a long vertical way, shape, or form, and ours are just different all over.
Is there someone I need to follow up with specifically to get that, or?
Like I said, the clerk is, is literally.
So, we're gonna open up.
So just, second hearing of the public for items not on the agenda, you'll be able to speak at that time.
So that was it, that just zoning, and the, the social media, I'll follow up with some text about social media policy and have it ready for you guys at our next meeting.
The district maps, actually, I think ours might need to be updated, for the simple fact that some of the polling locations changed. And those district maps, it were inclusive of the polling locations, and since they changed, those aren't the same, and once we put that out there in the community, it's gonna start confusing.
Yeah, yeah, and I did go to the poll, the polling or the voting, and I, I, like you said, it was like, okay, I didn't get what I was looking for.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, um, and that was it for miscellaneous, something if you are, anything for miscellaneous? Then, okay, we're going down to item number nine, second hearing of the public for items not scheduled for a public hearing or on the agenda. So the first item was Big B Coffee, then the second item is gonna be, um, anybody from the general, who wishes to speak. So Big B Coffee, as you travel westbound on Michigan Avenue.
Okay.
And you pass where Old Chase Bank used to be, now you're looking on the right-hand side, which is north. When you get by Cannons, which used to be St. Vincent de Paul, yeah, you see the old Ice Arena. That new building with the windows in it, and the gray brick.
Right in front of Ice Arena.
Right in front of Ice Arena on Michigan Avenue.
It's old time, old time sports camera.
Oh.
That's Big B Coffee, that's gonna be big.
Definitely, okay.
And then.
He didn't cry.
He told me three weeks ago that he got approval, signed the paperwork, the franchise agreement, so he said, it's, it's, Big B is coming.
Okay, oh, I guess I, I got confused, cause it's, people were making it seem like it was open, open, but it's not open, it's just, yeah, okay. I'm like, I don't see Big, okay. Gotcha.
So when you get a chance, uh, leave here tonight.
Here, there.
Yep, there you go.
Gotcha.
All right, and then, um, again, this is a second hearing, second hearing of the public for items not scheduled for a public hearing or on the agenda. If there is anybody from the public who wishes to speak at this time, for those items that I just stated, please approach the podium and address this body.
Of course, I just wanted to let Ashley know that I guess, um, what I've done is for the calendar, I've asked, I'm sending an email to each town.
Please.
You tell custos. For their information, inclusive of their district, I knew their name, so, once I get that information, I can forward it to you. Or anyways, you know, I'm, I'll just see if they know they do.
Well, America ain't easy.
Right.
I know the boundaries of the city. I said, America ain't easy.
Is that something, so once you get that information back, are you gonna be working with like planning to actually put it in a visual, you know, map or rep, or you're gonna just be drafting the map yourself? Okay. Okay, guys, okay.
I'm just, the calendar is supposed to have much information that you add, because the hot, we were about the last one, it had none. So we have a whole bunch of new, you know, officials and things in the city, and nobody knows anything about it, cause you're saying, right now, I mean, this is the public.
Yeah.
We even are, so people aren't keeping up with what's going on, so you wanna make sure all that information is included in there, so I can forward, please.
Thank you.
We can steal for the map, I can be, yeah, I can, I can create things to do anymore. So I'm available to help you with, thank you, if you, you know.
So choose to be indulged in such activities.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the general public that wishes to speak at this time?
I think we have someone else.
Go, go right ahead, sir. And these, again, just a reminder, these are for items not scheduled for a public hearing, and that we're not on our agenda. Right, so I guess, hit that mole, I just wanna show you guys some pictures of some works that's been done on a property located at eleven eighty-three Henry Rough. That show, not gonna talk about anything else, just wanna show you guys pictures. Showed you this last time, born after, outside, dang it. You stand. Born at, been outside. And then I, I picked up a couple more, it's over the inside, just so you guys can see it, I think I put it out too big, but. That's inside, it's kind of like the counter cash register is gonna be, and then another picture, oh, I'm sorry, they should have public. And then, this is another picture facing the other way, these are all like coolers, as, floor's a little messy, but that's cause they're working on it, so. Just wanna show you guys what's going on in there. It's a big four thousand square foot space, so, all right, not gonna make any comments, I just want, all right.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, and if there is anyone else from the general public at this time, feel free to approach and address this body. Hearing none and seeing none, we're down to adjournment, is the, the floor is open for a motion to adjourn?
Stop, to a board.
This would probably move in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
All the polls? Motion passes, this meeting is now adjourned at seven fifty-four.
Okay.